I do not, thank you, I went and got one.
I was gonna say, we're actually recognizing her tonight, now of all night, she doesn't show up.
Okay. Um, agenda final. It has been that day, it's sort of been that type of-
It's only Wednesday.
Is, that's, keeps, keeps coming up. Remind me of who the clerk is. Russ?
Yes.
You're the clerk?
Ready?
I am ready. Yes, thank you.
Joel Becker.
This isn't opening for me, but-
Peter Bliss and Black, here.
Scott Curry, here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Dave Pimple.
Here.
Russ Roloff, here.
Leslie Weitz.
Here.
And Superintendent Collins.
Here.
Alright, let's start tonight with a motion to approve the agenda. Could I get a motion in a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the March 21st, 2018 regular board meeting?
Motion?
There we go.
Second.
Alright. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, could I get a motion to approve the bills payable? And a second.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve charitable contributions to District 200 for the third quarter?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Hardy, thank you.
Oh, thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion to accept the quarterly review of students' activities account?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Move to good news. Jim?
Yeah, for, uh, um, new board members, uh, this is always a very fun evening for us as board members and I'm not sure how many years that Intech, uh, Intech is just one of many businesses that support what we do in our school district. And Intech has been sponsoring the employees of the semester for, well, as long as I've been here and that's been 16 years and so it's, it's really appreciated that, uh, our community recognizes all of our employees and what they give back and I know as board members, it's just wonderful for you to hear, the compliments and kudos from other staff members that, uh, that share this information about their colleagues. So with that tonight, um, each individual will get a plaque sponsored from Intech and they'll get a $50 gift card to somewhere in the community. Um, I read what was written about them and why they were selected. They get to come on up front. If they want to share anything, they can. Um, and if they don't want to share anything, that's, that's fine as well. Um, and then board members usually, uh, do come up and, and help award the plaques. So we go alphabetical, so, uh, Joe Beatty, come on up.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is the second, this is, I, I saw Joe earlier today and he was being recognized from CF Industries for just another, it might be 16 years in a row of grants, but, uh, they definitely do recognize what, uh, he gives back to our students and what he gives back to, uh, our community and county and that was also reflected in part of the recognition that was written about Joe. Joe Beatty is in his 24th year teaching biology at Hastings High School. Uh, he's wearing waders, walking through the muck of the Locur Stream, or, or looking for bugs or frogs or whatever else he can find. You'll also find him at times in the classroom at the high school, uh, as well. He's an incredible hard worker. As a teacher, he's constantly looking for better ways to help his students understand difficult subject matter. He spends countless hours scouring information about his subject matter to find current articles and issues related to his curriculum and then he integrates that right into his classroom. He spends countless hours planning for his field biology class and attends meetings to make contacts with local authorities about the river. He is a tireless advocate for the environment and a cleaner Vermillion and Mississippi River. He's not only a great teacher, but a great example for our students on how we must continue to learn and be caretakers of our environment. Congratulations.
Thank you. Actually, I have no idea who said these nice words.
I think Deanna's the only one who did. We didn't make them up, they're, they're all true.
Wow, that, that's just so nice to hear. I, I really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And I guess I'll put in a little something for CF Industries too. In addition to Intech, they are super supportive and they have been doing that for years. So it's great to have people in the community that help us teachers out, allows us to do good things. So, thanks so much.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you.
Yeah, Joel was there today where we, uh, the recognition took place and I bet there were, what, 10 to 11 teachers that were there being recognized for a variety of, of grants, so, again appreciation to our staff who take the time to write the grants. Uh, and then as Joe said, CF Industries willing to, to give money to support those dreams. Kim Frye, Director of Business, come on up.
This sounds good to go down, Tim.
Do you really think that the camera's only right in this spot? They have wide angle, it catches everybody. Um, I know I didn't write this about Kim, but a lot of these words I, I would agree as well. Kim Frye's been the Director of Business for the past 15 years. During her time as the Director, we've gone from statutory operating debt to fiscal solvency. This happened in no small part thanks to Kim's Frye's fiscal aptitude. Her job is immense, but she performs it with the utmost professionalism. Her ability to foresee the future and budget accordingly is nothing short of miraculous. Yet Kim isn't one of those people who are widely known or recognized around the district. On any day, you can find her in her office, I don't know how your eyes are still, um, I'm sure you're gonna end up blind for all the fine lining that you're doing, with her nose to the grindstone. Her work ethic is beyond compare. I do not know anyone who works harder in this district than Kim. She never leaves for a weekend without an armful of binders in her bag. When you pop in to ask her a question, no matter how small, she's willing to stop and find the answer. Her ability to research the best way for the district to approach a financial problem is why the district's finances have continued to improve during her tenure. She was the first person to see that moving to self-funded health insurance for the district was an option that we should explore as a way to hold down the cost of health insurance for our employees. She is always fair and has a, a keen sense of right and wrong. She strives to be the best because she knows that her best means the best for our district. Congratulations.
And just thank you. I'm, it's, it's an honor to work for the district. Thank you.
So glad to have you, thank you.
Davis Coach, where would you like me to stand, Davis? He's like, I'm not telling you.
Getting 16 years in the district.
Davis has only been a counselor at Hastings High School for a few years. Yet in this short time, he's made a big impact on the students he serves. Davis consistently goes beyond, beyond and above for students, particularly our English learners. He gives them a great deal of individual attention in terms of registration, college preparation, and caring for their mental wellbeing. Davis is a huge reason why our EL graduation rate is so high. His attention to these students and his willingness to help them gives them the confidence they sometimes need to achieve great results. Davis is a huge safety net for these students. He approaches them with the utmost concern. He is truly dedicated to crossing the Ts and dying the Is. Nothing gets by him. Congratulations. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Davis. Chris Hughesby, Assistant Principal at the high school.
I'll follow him, Steve.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Chris cares about all students, especially those who are at risk. In her work as an Assistant Principal, she takes the time to use every student interaction to get to know students better and the challenges that they may face in their life. She is super positive and helps students see that they do have hope and choice. She has quietly walked alongside teen moms, connecting them with local and county resources, as well as serving as a mentor for them. Even after the students graduate, Chris will continue the relationship with them to continue to guide and be a resource for them. Students know that each and every day, Ms. Hughesby will see the good in them, that she will take the time to listen and she'll always be there to be positive and to encourage them.
Thank you.
Greg Sandcamp. I was hoping you wouldn't show up, Greg, 'cause I'd take your $50. I figured you wouldn't be here with a beautiful day and to be able, oh, there, but so thank you for coming.
Thank you.
To say Mr. Sandcamp has been around for a while is an understatement. He's been teaching for the Hastings Public Schools for over 33 years. He's someone who teaches for all the right reasons. He seeks out opportunities to connect with students and have positive interactions with them, whether it's on the field at JFK Elementary or in the gym at the high school. His smile, positive attitude, and caring nature are contagious. And I think another strong, uh, point that I'll add is that even as Greg is retired, um, he's not gonna retire, his love of students, his love of giving back, uh, he's still gonna come back and do some coaching and also some substitute teaching for us. So I think that tells you, he got into education for all the right reasons. So congratulations.
Thank you, Tim. Appreciate it. Well, this community has been kind of been my home. I'm a hometown boy here and grew up here and lived here. I went to college in River Falls and, uh, yeah, we've always been close and, my kids, raised them, went through the school district here and then I, you know, got out and came back. I was blessed to get a job here and, uh, yeah, it's been a wonderful career and I just, I just feel really blessed that I've been able to work all around the district and meet so many people and it's just, uh, great colleagues, great kids and, uh, yeah, I've just been very blessed to be here. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Tammy Seaborn, Lead Cook at JFK Elementary.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Since becoming the Lead Cook at JFK Elementary in 2016, she has empowered the rest of the cooks to think on their feet and make decisions on their own. She is extremely flexible and has a calm demeanor, both excellent traits of a leader in a fast-paced and many times an unpredictable job. She is a very go with the flow type of person and is always willing to just, let's make it work together. She welcomes changes that come and is always willing to try something new, even though it might take some time for her and others to get used to the change. She is always able to offer her opinion, as well as share the ups and downs that might happen in the kitchen so that others can learn. And she also has some beautiful granddaughters with her today as well. Congratulations.
Thank you. I, moving over to Kennedy, I just love working with the little people. It makes me happy, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And employees of the semester, I know that you really want to stay here for an exciting board meeting, but this is your chance to leave. And I know it's just terrible outside, so you might want to stay in here, but, uh, feel, feel free to get up and leave and/or stay for a stimulating board meeting, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, uh, as board members know, some of my superintendent's report is an update on what might be happening in the district and some of my comments underneath this section tie into our, um, items as well. It's not that we can't ask questions and have more discussion when we get that, to that. But I try to preview some of that information before we get to the action items as well. So the first, uh, item up, or I think it's up, Deanna, and I haven't had much time to, uh,
It isn't the Ties one.
Okay, it's not the Ties. Okay, well, we'll go to what's surprised me.
Oh, the Rusty's homework.
Okay. Let's just say that it's been a, it's been a wild week and I had a Ties meeting today where we found out the information for the first time. I tried to get back from that meeting as my car died on, uh, 55. So eventually, Joe Haas happened to be driving by. And I said, "What are you doing out here?" And he goes, "What are you doing out here?" And, uh, um, he did give me a ride as my car was being towed, but I had to sit there for about an hour and wait. You know how that goes and, so then I quickly was jotting some notes down from the Ties meeting, get back. Uh, I said to Deanna, "Hey, can you turn this into a, um, a PowerPoint?" But, with that, I'll just go with the, the teacher's settlement first and we'll just, uh, we'll just kind of roll with that. Scott and Lisa, you can feel, uh, free to, um, jump in and share as well. I know that Scott and Lisa were the individuals that, you know, negotiated, uh, the teacher's contract. They were the main spokespeople for you, uh, as board members and they felt that, uh, it was important to share with you, even though we've had closed sessions and we've talked about the negotiations, they still felt it was important to share with you and share with the public, uh, where the settlement was, just as we do with, uh, other contracts on percentages, uh, et cetera, and whenever we make changes in the contract. Having said that, you know, I think one of the things that, uh, both us and the teachers recognized was to try and get a higher starting salary, that we want to attract. And that if we stay, uh, level with other school districts, um, we don't want that. We want them to say, "Hey, let's look to Hastings." We want that to be one of the first options. So one of our, uh, adjustments to make that happen was to completely wipe out, uh, the first step, which then all, all new incoming people are at. If Joe was a first-year teacher this year, um, next year's first-year teachers are gonna be on the same step as Joe. And that was one of the, the realities of that decision. Uh, so again, with discussion with the teachers, we did, as you can see, increase the, the starting salary from 38,643 to, to $40,000. Um, and then in 2018, 19, it'll be $40,849, um, as the starting salary. So, uh, another part of the discussion was Hastings, along with every school district in the state of Minnesota, is struggling to get substitutes. How do we address that? Uh, we did a study and showed that we, we have one of the top substitute teacher rate of pay, so it's not that we're not paying our substitute teachers. Well, it's just the fact that the pool is extremely, extremely limited. That substitutes aren't gonna hang around if, uh, if they don't get a job right now. You know the market, they can go get jobs, um, elsewhere. So one of the things that's been happening mainly, um, at our elementary and, and middle school site, because our high school site, because of the, the duty and prep time they can cover for each other, uh, when a teacher is sick and if we don't have a sub, but at the elementary level and our middle school of Scott and Lisa, as we heard, there's some times where, um, you have to partner up and maybe, um, cover, um, 33, three kids as we divide the kids up because the sum isn't there. So we talked about, uh, collapsed classroom pay if that happened for more than a two-hour period, that those teachers then, um, would get a little bit extra compensation. And the reality is if we're not giving it to a sub, then we do have the money there to, to give it to our own teachers. The teachers also recognized, uh, during that discussion that, "Hey, if it's 2:30 and I need to get to a doctor appointment that I couldn't reschedule and Scott's willing to cover for me for 35 minutes," then we just, we do that with principal approval. Or if, uh, emergency comes up, Russ has to get out of the building 15 minutes early, Dave will say, "Hey, send your kids my way, I'll cover." So the teachers recognize that it didn't have to be every time that we collapsed a classroom, it had to be for an extended period, so that's new, um, new to our contract and actually I saw probably three other contracts in the area that it's new to as well, so they're experiencing the same thing. The third item then is that we have a, a variety of health insurance plans and Triple Gold is the most expensive plan, but it co, it covers exactly the same as Comp Basic. And so we talked about the fact that if full single is covered in our contract, a new teacher automatically is gonna go to Triple Gold because it sounds better. Triple Gold sounds like better coverage than, than Comp Basic. And so even though we've sat down and, and educated on that issue, um, I have to admit, if I was a 23-year-old teacher and Triple Gold is offered, fully paid for, I'd, I'd go to it too because it just sounds like it should be covered. So in this contract, we're able to say that we will still offer Triple Gold as a district. It's an option that you can choose, but we will only pay the coverage up to Comp Basic. So if you want the Triple Gold, that's fine. So I think what'll happen as new teachers come into the district, now when they see that some out-of-pocket has to come for Triple Gold, they'll look at them more closely and then we'll be able to sit down with them and say, "It, it covers the same. It's, uh, the same coverage." So I would say that those, uh, in this teacher's contract were three of the big, you call them either language changes or adjustments. Then as we, um, as we get into probably more the meat and potatoes, what ties into, um, typically health insurance coverage and then your salary, which drives a lot of the contract, uh, we always like to, or I always like to have one year where you do a percentage and then a year where you do a, a dollar amount. Because if you keep doing percentages, the top is gonna spread from the, the bottom. And our teachers agree with that. Our PSAs, our custodians, our cooks, they get that as well, that, um, so, this year then would reflect that we added $1,000 to each of the step and then people do get to move a step as well. Our percentage of movements of steps is usually right around 2 to 2.25% just on the step movement and then the $1,000. And that means if I've been here 23 years as a teacher, my increase is $1,000 plus step movement. If you've been here two years as a teacher, your increase is step movement and $1,000. So even though I've been here longer than you, our, we're pretty close in that year of what we're going to get. Now, if I'm at the very top, I've got no step to take. So then that year, I get $1,000 and nothing else and you get $1,000 and step movement. But that's the reality. Eventually, um, all teachers do get to the top. Then in the second year, then we went with the percentage, 1.25, and then that's where the more veteran teachers get more of a salary increase boost, uh, than the rest of the teachers and, you know, the, you know, so the first year, the cost, uh, to the package was 3.646 and the second year was 2.447% for a total of 6.093%. And again, one of the things that helped, um, hold this contract settlement down a little bit was our health insurance was a 0% increase for 2018, 2019. Usually that has, uh, an impact, uh, in this as well. And then you can see the cost for us per year and the average increase per FTE, of course, there's gonna be some higher than that, there's gonna be some lower than that. We all know what, what average, uh, means, but that just shows you as the rest of the board in the community, um, where we settled overall and I don't know, Lisa or Scott, if there's any more than that. We just wanted to kind of take the time, but any other comments from you two?
Um, Scott, my singular comment is I, is we came in with a, recognizing that we wanted to be competitive in the, in the area. We want people to come to Hastings first and we want to get the first pick on if we hire somebody, don't hire somebody. So making that adjustment to the incoming salary was really important, while maintaining a really strong healthcare package and I think we did that. Some of the issues around language, around collapsed classrooms and stuff, we're, we're gonna try that out because we recognize that, you know, it's a regional problem and I don't know if that's the long-term fix or it's not, but we're all committed to fixing it and acknowledging that, that there is a, um, an implication to the staff and we want to find a way to give some compensation for that. I feel like we ended up at a competitive place with a fair contract. I mean, it's, it's always shocking to me to look at those total dollar values, but, you know, this is a 50-plus million-dollar operation, annual operation is running the school district and so it's, you know, this is what it is. It's a million, million and a half, two million, um, increases within the range of what we can expect.
Kurt?
Yeah, I think my only comment would be, um, thank you to the people of the city of Hastings for supporting your schools like you do.
Yeah.
Uh, because without the support that we receive from them via levies, via volunteering,
The donations that we've seen.
The charitable donations, the teacher recognition, things such as that, we certainly would not be as strong as a district, as, as strong of a district as we are.
Very true.
So, o, overall, I think, uh, comparing our district to others our size, I think we have a very, a very good contract here, one that I'm proud to offer. And, so, thank you to everyone involved.
Alright. Next, underneath the superintendent's report, and, and Kelsey can hop in on this as well, and I know that we are closing the work session, um, at the end of the board meeting to talk about the other, um, contracts that I've, uh, been negotiating and so at the end of that closed session, I'll just ask all of you who is coming, um, on Sunday night. Uh, but definitely, uh, I think in the world that we live in and, and the changing world that we live in and the changing world that I've seen in my, you know, 25 years now as a superintendent, uh, to be able to say as a school district and as a community, um, we do accept diversity here. We do want inclusion, we do want, uh, equity. And us as a school district, we're not gonna define what that means. We don't have to. It's just important for us to make a statement that, um, that's how we feel. And definitely, the school district and the city represent quite a, um, bit of the population and on Sunday, April 29th, uh, we're gonna come together for board members who can make it and city council members. And you know later on in the agenda, uh, the proclamation, sa, you know, sa, saying that this is where we stand as a, as school and a community. Um, for those of you, uh, who have lived here a long time, uh, you maybe don't see the, the community changing. Uh, maybe you do. Whether it be socioeconomic, whether it be, um, ethnic diversity, uh, whatever that might be, uh, we hear, um, from our own staff that it's changing and we want to make sure that we make that statement that, um, it is accepted here. And so we'll act on that later on in the agenda. And Kelsey's, um, I've, I've come in now on the, Mark, Mark Zuzik has led this with Mary O'Brien. Kelsey's been there for more meetings than I have, um, along with city council members, the mayor, um, Melanie Mescoli as well. So Kelsey, I don't know if there's anything else that you'd want to share on this issue?
I guess I would just say, this has been an incredible project to be a part of and I think what we're doing as a school district and as a city is a really strong statement and I'm really proud to be a part of that. And where we go from here after making this statement and if there are changes that need to be made, you know, that's something that we can look into, but I think making this statement and saying where we stand is an important piece of that. It's been great.
Thank you. Later on tonight, we have, uh, the recommendation from myself and the elementary principals to you as a, as a board. I'm not going to, uh, to change the, the boundary lines. I'm not going to go into great detail. We spent time looking at this, uh, at work sessions. We also had our public meeting the other night, um, a couple of weeks ago. Um, after that meeting, I met with the three elementary principals. We talked about what dialogue and comments that there were in each of those, um, groups at our work session. We talked about that as a, as a board, what were some of the comments, uh, potential ideas, et cetera. Uh, and really, after that process and meeting with the principals, there wasn't, um, any idea that we came up with or, or thought process to do anything different and yet that the need, uh, was still there, uh, to change the boundary lines. And as I said at that public meeting, it's one of the last decisions that a board ever wants to make. It's one of the last recommendations that a superintendent or a principal ever wants to make. Um, we don't want to have to make this decision for change. But really, as superintendent and as principals, if we want what's best for all students and if we're thinking of all students, then changing the boundary lines is something that we do need to do. Uh, I have up on, uh, the graph, you can see we, we don't have the kindergarten up there because we don't know what those numbers are yet for sure and we'll, we usually find those out unfortunately in August. Uh, but you can see that we're able to bring, uh, pretty good balance, uh, overall as, as we, as we've made those, those changes, so, uh, with that, the principals have already prepared a, a letter that would go out this Friday, if you as board members officially approve this, this evening. In that letter is contact information. In that letter is some ideas of things how we can get together in May. Uh, in that letter's information about kids campus, et cetera. Uh, again, they're waiting to mail that out and send it out electronically until the board, uh, this evening makes a decision on, on my recommendation. The, uh, the Ties update. Um, interesting. I guess that's a word for, for, but good, but good news overall. Uh, very good news for us overall financially. So, in December, when we met as superintendents, out of the 48 schools, 12 schools had already put in a letter to leave this June. The bylaws were that if you were gonna leave Ties, you had to, in advance of a year, let them know that you were leaving. So 12 of the 48 had submitted that letter, we were not one of those, those 12 and at the time, I wish that we were. As you all know how Ties financially has been, um, spitting, spinning out of control. Back in December, those 12 schools were told that if you leave in June, you owe us $44 per student. Uh, $44 for a 5,000 student district is a quarter of a million dollars that you would owe to leave. And the rest of us were told that we didn't put in our, um, letter in time, that on July 1st of this year, we'd have to pay $35 per student to get through this year. And then one year from now, when it closed, we were going to have to pay $37 per student to finalize all old liability. So the ones leaving, now, part of the, the theory behind that was, well, you're going to have to pay more because you're at least getting one year of service from us. So of course you're having to pay more because you're getting service from us. But you as board members know, we've removed ourselves from most of their, uh, products, we're down to their, their internets and IQ, uh, right now, basically. So that would be a lot of money to just stay for a service that you weren't using. And they couldn't promise those numbers because they didn't know how many people were going to be leaving and how much financial downward spiral that was going to cause. At that meeting back in December, Infinite Campus made a statement and they put it in the Minneapolis Star and Tribune that they would take over and they would just buy it out and nobody would owe a thing. Uh, Ties was reluctant to deal with Infinite Campus because there had been some lawsuits with, between them and Infinite Campus, so lack of a better word, Ties and Infinite Campus didn't, always see eye to eye. And of course, you know, as a board, that I hopped in on those situations and I sent some letters on my feelings on that and, uh, I got heavily involved in that because I wanted an open process. In the meantime, they were talking with NJPA. NJPA is a similar organization, only it's not owned by schools and it's up in the St. Cloud area. And they provide, uh, services to schools in the St. Cloud area, those schools buy that service from them. It's not a membership fee, so it's not owned. NJPA expressed interest in Ties. Why would NJPA express interest in Ties on a company that's spinning financially out of control? Uh, the only reason I can come up with, there's, it's the largest entity in the state of Minnesota, there's 300,000 students that are members of Ties. It has some of the, it has Anoka, it has Osseo, it has Rosemont Apple Valley. So if you can get your business in front of that market, you've got a pretty good shot of selling some services. So they showed an interest. So today at the meeting, uh, NJPA has now changed their name, they're no longer going to be NJPA and their Sourcewell. I'll probably go back and forth because I still call them NJPA and I don't even know what NJPA stands for, that part didn't matter to me. Probably National Joint Power Alliance or Product Alliance or something. Oh, okay. So, they were there today and they said, this isn't a done deal yet, but we're 90% certain that it's going to happen. Our board, our board at NJPA has said, yeah, start moving forward on this. They believe that the transition will happen some point during the 2018, 2019 school year where they will take it over. They don't know if that's going to be September, October, or November. They made a promise today that all products currently that Ties has, they will keep those for up to three years, even if they're losing money, that they will do that. That wasn't in writing, but they said that's their, their intention. When they do take it over, our obligation is done. We're done with them. We don't have to be, uh, a member. We can buy services from them, there'll be no fee, we won't have to pay $5 a student to be a member, it will be done. In order for that to happen, they're anticipating that we're going to have to pay about $17 to $20 during this school year as a cost to help financially bridge the losses that, that Ties has. In addition, they've got, for those of you who don't know where Ties is located, it's right off of Larpinter and Snelling, right by the state fair, it is a, a great property and a great location, the building is older and it's a three-story older building with a newer building that was added onto it. They don't believe, so here's going to be the catch. We're going to dissolve as an organization, but we're going to still own the Ties building because they're not, they're not anticipating that that building will sell just like that. So there's potential then, so they're saying that also during this year, then they're going, where they're going to charge each school district $2 to $3 per student for legal fees and to heat the building, lights on the building, roof the building, et cetera, and keep it operational. My comment back to them on that is going to be this, I just sat there and listened today, it was, in the past, it's been fruitless to make comments, I'll just put everything in writing. If there's 300,000 students that comprise Ties and we're all paying $3 to keep the building alive, that's $900,000 for the year. Maybe rather than selling it for the 2.8 million that you think it's worth, just sell it for 2.5. And then I don't have to pay, we don't have to pay that $3. That will be what I'll say to them in writing. Right now, we as a district and other districts, all 48 members on part of our, our levy in the fall of the year, we can lease levy for what we owe on the building. Uh, and it's, what is it, Kim Rowan, $9,000 to $10,000 or? I don't, she doesn't like to work in rowing numbers. I'll just say it, um, and she can't, it's around $9,000 to $10,000, I believe, that we lease levy. So we can still lease levy for that building this year yet. They, there is a bill right now in the senate and they're trying to get somebody in the house to carry it, that if we couldn't sell, sell that building into the following year, that all school districts would have the right to at least lease for that building that we owe money on, so we're not taking money out of our, uh, general fund. So, does this, is this a good, yeah, this is a, a good deal. Um, it's better than what, you know, if you go back up to the top and if we were going to have to pay $35 and $37, that's $70 times 4,500 students, that's 300-some thousand dollars over the next two years we were going to have to pay. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy with it, it's, we get to be done if we want to be done. Of course, if we're a member and an owner of a business that's in the red and owes money, we owe our share. It's, you know, we do owe our share. Somebody asked today, what if I just want to be done? What if, um, NJPA takes its over on September 1st and I just pay my $17 and I'm done and you can sell the building and you can take my share? I don't have to pay the $2 to $3 then and if you get, sell the building for 4 million, lucky you. And the answer was, we haven't talked about that, but probably the answer is no, that you're an owner of that building with the rest of us and, uh, you need to help cover the costs. Again, that's their executive committee, you know, talking on that. So overall, um, they've hired a marketing firm, we can lease levy. I'm shocked at how long they believe it will take to market and sell that building. Um, from what we saw today, they're planning on three to four months of marketing before they even open it up for bids. But I don't, that's not my background, that's not my expertise, maybe that is how you, how you do it. So, there, there wasn't a lot of discussion, it was just kind of, here are the, here are the facts and overall, as a school district, um, I'm very happy of how it did turn out. And, and I think you're all aware from the last five months, I'm not happy with the process. Um, I don't think it was open to everyone and every entity, but we landed in a, in a good spot.
I'm especially happy with the, with the first bullet item up there about the transition time being in 2018.
Yep.
Because that was my big concern as Ties is trying to ramp down and NJPA or Sourcewell is trying to take it over and ramp up and you have that knowledge transfer going on there. You need to keep those tie, some, not all of them probably, but some key Ties employees engaged in order for that to happen and that's expensive. So seeing that.
And remember, it's not a done deal yet.
No.
Stranger things have, have happened, right. But NJPA had their entire board there, there was six or seven board members there, they had their CEO there, their assistant CEO there, their director of marketing, they're making a powerful statement that we're, we're going down this road. They truly believe that if they come in during this year and build a good relationship with Hastings, that we'll stay there then for some of the products. They believe that Centennial will stay there for some of the, I mean, that's their belief. And of course, if you're a good business person, you believe that if you have a good service and a good product, you're going to hook people. Um, I don't know how true that is of how much they're going to be able to retain. So, any other questions on Ties?
I think we have a better shot of getting it done because the building and the business are separated.
I agree. Yep. I think that's very true, separating those two is important. And I, I think that I'll, um, I'll talk about the high school, uh, roof bids when we get to that. I believe in your pack, it was quite a bit of the information, so I chose not to make a, a slide, so I'll, I'll, I'll go through that when we get to that.
Yeah, the full resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to action items. All right, our first action item tonight is a motion to approve a joint proclamation by the city council and the school board to be read on the evening of Sunday, April 29th, which articulates the common beliefs, aspirations and commitments of the city and the school district towards diversity, inclusion and equity in our community. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion?
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our second action item is a motion to approve the 2017, 2019 Teachers' Master Agreement. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carries. Our third action item tonight is a motion to approve the 2017, 2019 License Community Education Coordinators Contract. Um, can I get a motion in a second?
I'll motion.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to share that, um, this contract, we, we have several community ed coordinators, uh, this is the one coordinator position that requires a specific licensure and a lot of this person's contract follows the teacher's agreement, so that's why it's the 2017, 19. So it's really the same settlement that you're approving for the teacher's contract.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our fourth action item tonight is a motion to approve the realignment of district boundary lines as they relate to elementary attendance areas in the school district. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our fifth action item tonight is a motion to approve a resolution awarding Hastings High School Re-Roof Contract. The complete, um, resolution is attached at the end of the agenda. Could I get a motion in a second and then we'll open it for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion, Tim?
Yeah, um...
It's at the end of your...
The very last, or the second to last page. Um, you know, we opened the bids for the high school roofing project and then Wold had set up a meeting, um, with the facility committee meeting, members. Uh, Peter Blissinbacher has been typically, uh, on the committee, Peter asked that to be removed from the committee because, uh, Peter has a son who worked for one of the contractors, so we did remove. Dave then was an alternate. So, uh, Dave, Joe and Russ knew that we were going to be meeting, um, in a work session with Wold. Uh, really, it was originally set up to talk about the alternate. Uh, we had the, the base bid of the roof and then we had also asked for some alternates for them to consider. And so, uh, originally, the discussion was going to be, do we want to go with the base? Do we want to go with alternate one, uh, or alternate two? Uh, for board members who aren't a part of the facility committee, uh, the alternate, uh, one is a, I'll, I'll just say, a gypsum board that comes over, it gives more support to the roof, it gives more support to the walking areas. Uh, in theory, it should also, uh, hopefully give more longevity, uh, to the roof. And so, the facility committee had strong interest in alternate, uh, one after we heard the discussion and, uh, did not have as much, um, interest in alternate two, we quickly just moved to, back to the alternate one. Prior to that meeting then, Scott McQueen from Wold had given me a call and said that he felt that there were some procedures that were not followed, there were some irregularities, uh, in following the specs and that he wanted to talk, uh, with the facility committee about that as well. So Scott outlined what he felt were some of those irre- irregularities. Uh, by law, the school board does have to accept the lowest bid on this issue, uh, unless there would be some irregularities that would be found in the, in the process. Uh, Russ, Dave and Joe, after listening, they two agreed, um, that the specs maybe weren't followed the way they were intended and that they said that I should consult with our attorney on the issue. So then I contacted our attorney, had some discussion with our attorney, um, our attorney and Wold then followed up, uh, with Millersburg, who is the lowest, uh, uh, bid on it. And yesterday, in a phone conference call, Kim Frye sat in on that phone conference call with myself, uh, our attorney and, uh, um, Scott from Wold and our attorney said that, uh, he is recommending that the board should reject the bid from Millersburg based on those irregularities that he sees and that we should accept the, the next lowest bid. So my recommendation, uh, back to you, the, the facility committee members, ever since that day, have not really been involved in it, other than me sending them, uh, an email here or there about what, um, our attorney was making as statements, uh, on the irregularities in the bid process. So, with that, um, based on our attorney's recommendation, after looking at all the information, I then am recommending that the board follow the resolution, uh, and reject the bid and accept the next lowest bid.
As we look at these, I see a base bid, an alternate one and an alternate two.
It's the base and alternate one.
Combined.
Combined.
Okay.
And the bidding was, um, extremely close, uh, between then, Millersburg was the original lowest and then Jackson and Central, um, Roofing were the next two lowest. And based on our decision of whether or not we were going to go with the alternate, if we didn't go with the alternate, then Central would be the lowest bidder. But if we went with the alternate, then Jackson and Associates would be the lowest bidder. And the board, uh, again, said, we do want to go with, with that alternate. So that's our rec, yeah, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I was...
It is, yep, thank you.
I know, I was doing a quick...
Because they are so close.
It is, yep, it is to go with the, it is to go with the base bid.
That's crazy.
And alternate one, which then would be awarded to, uh, Jackson and Associates. And I believe that all three of the board members on the facility committee are also in agreement with my recommendation.
Is there any further discussion?
I just have a question, how does this bid compare to what we had budgeted for the high school roof?
With the original estimate?
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's coming in under our, underneath our original projections. And it does have the 30-year warranty. That was definitely something that we all wanted in the high school, um, roof.
Yeah.
Yeah, we really looked at this hard because of that 30-year warranty compared to the, our warranty we currently have, it's hard on the high schools, we really didn't want to mess that up.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion? Russ, will you take a roll call vote?
Just a thank you to, to the facilities committee and for heading this up.
Yeah, working this through.
It was a lot of work, so thank you.
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Blissinbacher?
Excite.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Issa Hadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pumbel?
Yes.
Russ Roloff?
Yes.
Gus Weitz?
Yes.
I do want to, um, say too, that I really respect Peter, um, he has a son...
He has a son that was working for one of the contractors and put him in a difficult position as a, a school board member and I really respect his professional approach that he, that he took to this. He has a responsibility to at least share some information and thoughts with me and yet not be forceful saying, Tim, we should go this way and, and definitely that's how Peter handled the situation. So thank you in recognition to Peter as a board member.
Okay, our next action item is a motion to approve a resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of probationary teachers. Can we ask for a motion in a, in a second with waiving the reading?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I would like to do, I'd like to consider a motion in a second with a waiver of the reading. The entire text of the resolution is in the minutes, it's just a little dense.
Remove that we waive the reading of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, thank you, is there any discussion?
I just wanna share that non-renewal doesn't automatically mean job performance. Non-renewal can be that we hired you in December and at that time when we hired you, and this happened, and, and at the time when we hire you, I always say, you know what? We hired you in December, we're gonna reopen it next fall. You can apply, but the pool was limited in December and so we always wanna get the best candidate. So sometimes a non-renewal can be that type of, of situation. Sometimes a non-renewal can be that teacher also has a conflict per se and they, they agree with the non-renewal. So I just wanna make sure that whenever we have the non-renewal, it's not on job performance. It can be a conversation that we had before a person was even hired.
So that non-renewal, just to be clear, that non-renewal that would happen where it's, hey, we're gonna reopen this in the fall, we could see somebody saying, yeah.
There could be. I know, yeah, potentially, we could hire. Yep.
Okay, yeah, that's a good point of clarification, thank you, Tim. Any further discussion? Russ, will you take a roll call vote, please?
Joe Becker?
Yes.
Peter Bliss and Baca?
Yes.
Scott Gergen?
Yes.
Issa Hadeen?
Yes.
Dave Pumble?
Yes.
Russ Rollup?
Yes.
Justin Weitz?
Yes.
All right, our seventh item is a motion, could I get a motion in a second, to approve the 2018-2019 non-contract rates of pay schedule? There was an attachment in the Dropbox on that.
I'll motion, second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? We got a little preview of this at our last work session.
And we, we always follow, always adjusting this a little bit as we go through.
All right, here's the single most popular motion that we'll have all year, I just wanna highlight it. A motion to approve Friday, June 1st, 2018, as the last day of school for seniors. This is presuming no more snow days. Do we get, oh, we didn't vote. All the people are on that contract, they're like, wait, wait a minute, there was no vote, all right, fine. I was so excited about the next motion.
We did.
We do have a motion in a second. On, action item seven, approving the 2018-2019 non-contract rate of pay schedule. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. And now, it is time for the single most popular motion. So don't all fight amongst yourselves. To approve Friday, June 1st, 2018, as the last day of school for seniors, again, presuming no more snow really stays, just saying.
I'll motion, second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor? No more snow, exactly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, our ninth action item is a motion to approve the retirements of a number of staff members. That end of the season party's getting bigger and bigger every month. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Centuries.
I know, it's just, I know. People are serving decades and decades and decades. And across the board, in just multiple roles, multiple roles. We wish them all well and are sad at the loss, it's what happens, yeah.
It's a fantastic thing for the district when you can attract that level of talent and have that level of continuity through the years, it's, it's fantastic, so thank you to all of them.
Yeah, yeah, really valid points, yeah, very valid. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our 10th action item tonight is a motion to approve the termination of Eric Kabat effective 4/5/2018. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to accept the resignation of three individuals listed below. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, action item 12 is a motion to approve leaves for seven, eight individuals. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Oh, any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor, there's never any discussion on that, but I should still ask. All right, in favor, it sounded like a resounding aye, all those opposed? All right, motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve a three-year extended leave of absence without pay for Rebecca Gartske, beginning October 1st, 2018, and continuing through the end of the 2020-2021 school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just wanna remind board members again that in order for an individual, for the district to pay in the TRA and for them to match their TRAs, they have to ask for a three-year extended leave. Probably have done a total of eight to 10 three-year extended leaves because the leave is usually before they've reached rule of 90, retirement age. So most people can't financially do it or their life, they're not at a point where they can do it. I'm not saying that Becky can financially do it, whoops. So anyway, I've met with her, I've met with the union representation and I've shared with you the terms and so I'm, I'm recommending approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve the employment of four individuals. Is there, could I get a motion in a second?
I'll motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Then we have just a list of some other business items coming up and this list is gonna start to get longer. We have a few more board, board-wide activities over the next month or two. We have a work session on the 9th of May, do you anticipate that's gonna be here, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. And then our employment, retirement, and recognition program, which is held at the high school. That's a really nice event, I know the timing can be a little odd, especially for those of you who are like, are gainfully employed. But I encourage you to come if you can.
It does last, just for new board members, it lasts about an hour, two, hour and 15 minutes.
Yeah, so it's not super long. And they very frequently have chocolate-covered strawberries, just saying. And it's just really nice to see all of our retirees gathered in one place. Again, that, that just commitment to the district and the service that can be acknowledged is terrific. High school awards program, those of you who are on the high school student lunch group, hopefully I'll have that on your calendar the next meeting there. And then our regular board meeting back here on the 23rd of May.
Just a ping on the high school awards program too, that if, if you haven't had a chance to attend it, I'll put in my plug for it. It's really a fantastic night to get together and to see our community and extended community and their generosity to our, to our students is just, it's absolutely incredible.
Yeah.
The, the amount of scholarship money that they provide.
And for new board members, that's typically a 7:00 to 7:30 start time and that can go till 9:30.
And it's, and it's more than just the local scholarships, it's also, it's also your departmental awards and honoring of students that were national merit finalists, et cetera. So it's, it's really great.
Also on the meeting dates, I wanna remind the facility committee that on May 22nd, right before the student luncheon at 11 o'clock, Wold will be there as well, I think the track bids we're reviewing and there's some other bids that we're reviewing. I told Dave, because Dave's at the student luncheon at noon, so it makes sense for Dave to come too, that I have no problem with all four board members being there. I'll have Deanna posted on our, our website that the meeting can be open to the public, that's fine with me. So just put that on your calendar for 11 o'clock on the 22nd.
Okay, and with that, could I get a motion in a second to close the meeting for non-certified negotiations update? All right, what I was gonna say, one of you can take a second. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. So we'll adjourn to the adjacent conference room.
Can I trust you to design all this?
Me too.
Well, I know I can find you.
Okay.